I call to order the regular meeting in the Morganton City Council, April 4, 2020. I'll ask on Chris Hawkins if he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
If you'll please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call on Reverend Burt Williams of North Morganton United Methodist Church to lead us in an invocation.
Mayor, councilpersons, honored guests, and citizens, let us pray. Oh, good and merciful God, we gather here tonight to do the work of the people of Morganton, asking that you guide the discussions and reports that come to this council so that they may make wise decisions for the good of your people. So we ask that you give them clear minds and great vision to be filled with your will for the city of Morganton. We do so with the knowledge and appreciation that we are part of a great region of communities that relies upon one another, further that we are part of a state and a nation that was formed to be a more perfect union, to establish justice, to ensure domestic tranquility, a common defense, general welfare, and the blessings of liberty. We mourn that not all people enjoy such blessings in equal measure, and especially during this time that there are those at war today to gain and to retain such for their homelands. So this evening, we humbly ask you that you work through each of us to affect the areas that are within our domains, to bring these to our citizens, the citizens of our fair city, through the due process of this council. In your holy and almighty name, we pray, amen.
Thank you, Reverend Williams. Next, I'd like to introduce counsel to my far right, Wendy Cato, Mayor Pro Tem, Chris Jernigan, City Council, Louis Vina, our City Attorney, I'm Ronnie Thompson, your Mayor, Sally Sandy, City Manager, Butch McWayne, City Council, Chris Hawkins, City Council, Renee Carswell, our Recording Secretary and Executive Assistant, thank you so much, and interpreter for the deaf, Danette Stellman Bridges, and Ernest Williams IV. Our first item of business is a presentation by Mark Patrick, School Director of North Carolina School for the Deaf. Mark, if you'll come forward, please, and address counsel and our citizens. Thank you for being with us tonight.
And thank you very much for the opportunity to come this evening. One of the things that I wanted to do was, after two and a half years in my position at the North Carolina School for the Deaf, was to come and just share some of the amazing things that we've been doing. Oftentimes, the only thing we hear are the negatives, and we are trying to revamp kind of a positive culture at the school. And so I hope that the presentation that I'll share with you tonight, and just some of the amazing opportunities that we've had, will be uplifting to everybody that's here. So one of the bright spots about the North Carolina School for the Deaf is that we are duly accredited, and as a public separate school here, here in Morganton, we serve students who are deaf and hard of hearing, of course, here in the beautiful foothills of North Carolina. North Carolina provides services for students who are three years old, all the way up to 22 years old. And so we have a licensed and certified pre-K program that allows students to be able to transition from a public school out of a pre-K program there, or straight out of the beginnings program directly to us if they present with a hearing loss of some, a documented hearing loss of some kind. We also have an amazing post-secondary program that serves students from 18 to 22 years old, if they qualify for that program, to assist them with furthering life skill opportunities and job skill opportunities as well. So this school year, one of the things that NCSD has done is we have revamped our mission. And we want, I just wanted to take a moment to share with you what our mission is, and pardon reading, but I think that it's really important. Our mission is, is that we provide a student-centered, standards-based instruction to any student who is deaf and hard of hearing in a multicultural and a multilingual environment. And what that means is, is we have students that, we have a very diverse student population that we serve through the Western 46 counties in the state of North Carolina. And we had to step back and look at how we were actually serving our students. And one of the things that we felt like we needed to do was, we needed to honor the multicultural perspective and multilingual perspective as well, because many of our students come to us with no language, but yet at the same time, they leave as a multilingual staff or a multilingual student in that we teach not only American Sign Language, but we teach English, but we also teach their home language as well. And so it provides a tiered approach to ensure that they can communicate holistically throughout their total school environment, and their local community, and their home as well. And also, our students are enabled and empowered to be lifelong learners and to be productive, contributing citizens to humanity. That's really important to us, because each one of our students needs to understand that they are loved, and that they can continue to learn once they, once they come to us. Our vision for our students is that they will thrive in an accessible, positive learning environment, which they can achieve proficiency in American Sign Language, as well as English, and as well as achieve their individual academic potential, and become leaders in their communities. We think that it's important that we, that we focus on the individual academic potential, because each one of our students, of course, is individualized. And no student learns the same, especially the students that we serve, because NCSD has really transformed over the years. And we, we serve students who are deaf and hard of hearing, but most of our student body also presents with other special circumstances, of course. That comes along with that, with the revisions of IDEA over the last few years. We have a long list of belief statements, that's pretty small, and so just to kind of touch on just a few of those, you know, we think that it's important that we have our students constantly reflect upon their practice and upon their days. And one of the things is that it's important that you're always respectful to your peers, and anyone, anybody that's around of you, and also that there, you always present with dignity, and you encourage everybody, especially with, at the unique pace that our students learn. Just to touch on another one, you know, we want to provide our students with a safe, orderly, and nurturing environment. Because our, many of our students stay with us Sunday evening through Friday afternoon, we are their ex-purente as well. And so it's important that our second and third shift residential life staff, you know, have those caring moments with them, because they, I mean, it is their second home. And oftentimes, it's what they consider their primary home. So it's a, it's quite a beautiful thing for, for us to feel that way. We use data-driven and research-based interventions and approaches to continue to see positive outcomes for our students. We think that that is part of the reason why, just a few weeks ago, that we were successful with a dual accreditation through the Council of Deaf Schools, as well as through Cognia, which allows us to be able to provide accredited diplomas for our students to be able to attend for your universities. Being accredited with CEASD is, puts us with a small elite group of schools in the United States, a group of just 14 schools that are accredited through our council. And so Morganton has something to be very proud of, as, as we have our school nestled right in the city center, and it's just a beautiful thing to see. And we're, we are really excited about the significant amount of work that went into that, to be able to make that happen for, not only for our students, but for our community. We continue to have deaf and hard-of-hearing students. Our students face just a plethora of challenges that come with, you know, that are so impactful because of the bio-psychosocial aspect and level that some of our students come to us with. Some of our students present with significant mental health concerns. And so, you know, a student cannot learn if they are not fed, well-slept, and ready to learn. And so oftentimes, we have to work on those behavioral and mental health concerns prior to being able to move forward with their academic needs. So we also always emphasize the importance of our learning environment with accessible language, whereas everybody signs all the time when you're on campus, remembering how important deaf culture is to our students and our community. Because not only do we, as the School for the Deaf, fit into the Burke County and Morganton community, but we also fit into a gorgeous deaf community that is right here in Morganton. And so we can't, we can never forget that true cultural perspective that we also have to bring in when we're serving our students. We try to always be exceptional role models for our students, and our students are always empowered to have that, to continue to develop that foundation to becoming a true outstanding citizen. Some of our celebrations, as I just explained, is that we were recently duly accredited through the CEASD and Cognia. It's a, it's a long and arduous process that we, we really worked hard in. The North Carolina School for the Deaf's leadership team, and the academic team, as well as our residential life team, all should be commended for the amazing work that they did, because of the workload that goes into that while working a normal job has been quite significant. So anytime that you see one of our staff members, please congratulate them on the amazing work that they did. We continue to work very hard on beautifying the campus. The campus had some great needs when I came back to it in January of 2000. I was only there eight weeks before the pandemic hit. And so you don't know what you don't know, and then you don't know. So it's been, it's been an interesting ride, for sure. I, I came to the North Carolina School for the Deaf in 2006 as an educator, and transitioned to the Director of Exceptional Children's in 2011, and then stayed until 2017, when I left, to take a principal's position in one of the districts, and then came back in 2000, when the, when the superintendent position opened. So I never dreamed that I would not retire from there. So it's a, it's a beautiful place for me, it's truly in my heart. We've got some exciting news about some building renovations that we're getting ready to do. We received some federal funds to be able to begin renovation on our superintendent house, which is kind of the anchor of the campus. So we're excited about being able to get that underway, once we get through state planning processes and that. So we've got our new collaborations that are beginning with the North Carolina School of Science and Math. Mr. Baxter and myself, along with department heads from the North Carolina School of Science and Math, we have already begun to develop some gorgeous conversations about how we can do some cross-inclusion, using, truly utilizing both campuses to their fullest, and having not only that, but our students will benefit so greatly from those, from those opportunities. And then, of course, we have already well-established collaborations with Western Piedmont Community College and Burke County Public Schools. So we're very fortunate for, for them. Maintaining sustainability, viability, and viability is what we're, what we're trying to do. The accreditation, we hope, was just that first process in, in continuing that. With our enrollment in, at its current number of 77 students, then it's, it's an incredibly small number for the, for the large campus that we have. But we, we are beginning to share with everybody how important that it is that we continue to be viable. And so we're excited about that. And our leadership team, as well as our stakeholders, we've got some stakeholders in the room today. We continue, you know, we just continue to work together. Through that process, our, our strategic plan is also expiring this year. So, you know, it's just, everything kind of hits you all at one time. So we are working diligently through stakeholder meetings currently, and developing a strategic plan that we know will continue to, you know, push us through for at least the next three years. So we're excited about that. So when you, when you have somebody ring you up and say, will you please answer some questions for me, please say yes. So that'll, that'll, that'll mean a lot to us. The next thing that's really important to me is that we, we true, we continue to lead with a moral purpose. And the students recognize that, when you go in, your heart's in the right place. And so we, we have to have our educators teaching with passion, we've got to have the commitment to excellence with everything that we do, and we have to always present with integrity, and most importantly of all, is we have to always value our equity and our diversity that we have, because it is true on our amazing little campus that we As we continue to be sustainable and viable, one of the things that we're doing is, was we continue to build collaborative relationships, all the way from Morganton to Raleigh. And you could even start in Cherokee, because our, our farthest student west is in Cherokee, and our farthest student, our farthest student east is, actually lives in Elizabeth City, and one lives in Wake County. So we serve students all across the, all across the state. It causes, it presents us with some transportation struggles and challenges sometimes, but we always, we always find a way to break those barriers. One of the things we don't have at NCSD is, we don't have barriers, we only have ways around them. So it's a beautiful philosophy to have, philosophy to have, so. But we recognize, you know, we continue to recognize all of the progress that we are doing, and we always celebrate our successes. And we continue to share our work with everything that we do, because we have to share what we're doing, or nobody knows the excellence that's actually happening on the campus. So we try to continue to ensure that we do that. And we are working diligently on engaging our families and developing additional stakeholders, because without that, you lose that level of viability that we really need. So we're excited about that. And then we continue, of course, to strengthen our student and community connections. And we can, we are excited, because we, just in the last month, we've got, we've had five students that have been hired for paying jobs in our local community. And rather than just staying in the dorm at night, they have asked, we want to go to work, we want to get paid, and we make it happen. So we, you'll see our little buses driving around town all hours of the night, going and picking up kids, but because we're, we're helping make it happen for them. So that's pretty exciting. And then, you know, lastly, and most importantly, the thing that we have to have is, we have to have energy, enthusiasm, and hope. Because without energy, enthusiasm, and hope, you can't begin a true culture change. And the culture that we have is what drives, it's the artery for everything that we do. So we, we constantly are talking about getting on our energy bus, and making sure that you bring in your energy and your enthusiasm and hope every single day. Sometimes, when you're walking in the door, you have to back up, you have to scrub it off, and you have to take a deep breath and go in, you know, because the first thing to do is, the students will, will call you out. You grouchy today? You know, and you're like, oh, you know, no, I'm not, sorry. You know, and they're like, yeah, you are. And so we, we constantly are talking about that at meetings and things, is that we have to bring it, you have to bring it in, you've got to bring in your energy every single day. And so that's what I hope that I can leave all of you, and all of you, this, this evening with, is that it's, the North Carolina School for the Deaf is so excited to be here, and we're so excited about where we're going. And our fun has just begun, because the, the sky's the limit for our students. So thank you so much for the opportunity to come and speak with you this evening.
Mark, thanks so much.
Have a lovely evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Our next item of business is a proclamation. We have a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. I'd like to read that proclamation. Whereas children are vital to our community's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most valuable assets, and whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development, and whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community, and whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting, and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children will ensure all children grow to their full potential, and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now, I, Ronnie Thompson, is Mayor of the City of Morganton, to hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the community in which we live. Adopted this fourth day of April, 2022, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Sally Sandy, City Clerk. I'll ask Chris Jernigan if he'll present a proclamation, that proclamation, to Ms. Lisa Schell. Do I have a motion to accept this proclamation?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Chris, if you'll make that proclamation, I believe she has a guest with her.
Lisa, on behalf of the city, the mayor, and the council, I want to present the proclamation for you, and thank you for all the work that you are doing in helping lead our efforts. You and I know child abuse is not in April, it's all the time, and we really have to fight hard to, to find ways to prevent those of the folks in the community who would hurt our children. And so I appreciate all the efforts you're doing, and I hope that we'll hear a little bit more about some of those efforts tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, we were not going to spend much time speaking. As soon as we exit the building, we're going to plant a pinwheel garden in honor of the children of Burke County. And our teen, Ms. Morganton, Ashlyn Robinson, is here to accept this proclamation on behalf of all the youth in Burke County. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda, we will talk about upcoming events. In downtown, our food trucks are moving from King Street to the Courthouse Square, beginning April 1, 2022. Enjoy a variety of food truck options, in addition to our downtown dining, every Monday and Wednesday, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Our pop-up farmer's market is from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at 111 North Green Street, starting April the 9th, 2022. We need to save the day for the grand opening and ribbon cutting of the old historic Courthouse Square, May the 6th, 2022, at 12:00 p.m. There'll be public tours, more details will be announced later. We have some unbelievable artwork out in our hall, by Casey Cole, paper mache, it really is interesting artwork. At Kama, Etta Mae and the Southern Fried Chicks will be appearing Saturday, April 30th, 2022, at 7:30. And then our recreation department, our Easter egg hunt is back on track at the Catawba River Soccer Complex on April the 9th, 2022, beginning at 10:00 a.m. The egg hunt will begin at 11:30 a.m. The Appalachian Road Show will be at the Outdoor Amphitheater at Kama, behind Kama, April 25th, from 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock. An opening night of Little League Baseball will be at Catawba Meadows Park, April 25th, at 5:45. The rain date will be April 26th. That's our updates. Next on our agenda is the North Carolina Municipal Power Agency. Sally, do we have an update?
Nothing at this time.
We have a consent agenda, and Sally, I believe there's five different items on that consent agenda, if you'll cover those, please.
Absolutely. So the items on the consent agenda tonight include regular minutes from our meeting on March 7th, the City Council Special Meeting Workshop held on February 25th, minutes from that meeting, two budget amendments, $1,371.60 in insurance reimbursement for a vehicle in our cemetery and grounds division that was damaged, and then an insurance reimbursement for damage to an electric truck in $2,339.60. Except water line easements between the City of Morganton and several LLCs, that is the Murphy's Farm Complex, and those are water line easements for the water lines that they're installing out there. And then finally, the consideration of approval of an ARPA and Special Projects Manager position with a pay grade of 38. This is something that we talked earlier in our meeting, and there is a ton of federal funding coming down, and needing someone to coordinate and maximize those opportunities.
Do any members of council wish to have anything removed from the consent agenda? Not all to entertain a motion to accept.
So move.
Have a motion, do I have a second? All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is our new business for the night. And first will be a public hearing and consideration of an application to rezone tracks of land at 510 South College Street, from medium intensity district to high intensity district. Public meeting will now come to order, call on Mayor Pro Tem, Wendy Cato.
Mr. Mayor and council, I request that I be excused from voting upon or considering this zoning matter, because this decision is reasonably likely to have a direct financial impact on me, since as a Realtor, I represent a buyer of one of the affected properties.
Thank you, Wendy, for making that. Do we have any item of business?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Wendy Cato from voting on this rezoning matter, called the South College Street, because the decision would likely have a direct substantial and readily identifiable financial impact on her.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just saying, as the city attorney, that this action is taken out of an abundance of caution under state law to make sure there's no potential conflict of interest.
Thank you, Louis. Any other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Wendy. Call on Philip Luckadoo, if he'll sort of open our public hearing to give us most of the details.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of council, on the screen.
It's a lovely picture.
There we go. So on the screen, you see the, the location map, you see it's directly across from Kama on South College Street. The applicant, Peachland Reynolds Associates, applied to rezone the four tracks. They are varying sizes, but total 8.94 acres. The current zoning, which is MID, is intended to have medium to high-density residential, and then some medium-density institutional office, service, and retail uses that have minimal impact on the adjacent residential areas. The HID zone, which is what it's proposed to go to, would have some intend, some is intended to accommodate high-density residential, and a wide variety of institutional office and retail service, and light manufacturing uses. The subject tracks are adequately served by city water and sewer, and they have access on South College, Harren Street, or West McDowell Streets. The rezoning of these tracks could impact adjoining lands by increasing traffic noise, overall intensity of uses. The, just as an example of the increase in, in density, is the base residential density for MID is two units per acre. If you include the performance points that we have, you could get up to 10 units per acre. Those numbers for base residential for HID are six, and for performance residential is 20. The city's Mission 2030 Future Land Use Plan calls for all four of these parcels to be designated, or they are designated rather, as institutional or governmental. We think that that was because of the land uses that were around there with Kama and all the other governmental institutional uses, that corridor was, was designated as such. But be that as it may, in order to rezone this property, and because of the consistency statements that are required in, in the zoning enabling legislation, council would need to amend, take steps to amend, the Mission 2030 or Future Land Use Plan. After all of that, looking at all of that information, analyzing all of that information, staff has concluded that the, the public demand, in addition to all of the information that it's, that has adequate water sewer, has adequate access and all of that, the Mission 2030 Plan was written in 2009. We have a much more recent planning document, the 2017 Downtown Master Plan, which contemplates, as you know, a, a deficit of about 1,850 residential units within that five-minute walk of downtown. And so staff has recommended that the Mission 2030 Plan be designated as, or those parcels be designated as commercial and mixed use, and that the rezoning take place. The March, at March 10, 22, or 2022, the Planning and Zoning Commission met and unanimously recommended the same, to rezone the, the parcels and to amend the comprehensive plan accordingly.
Thank you, Philip. At this time, we are in public hearing, we'd ask anyone who wants to speak for or against this project to come forward, identify themselves.
And may I put one thing on the record to, to make it clear? So there's a 1.13 acre parcel in, in the rezoning area that is on the corner of South College and West McDowell, and that is owned by the city of Morganton.
Okay, thank you. Again, it is public hearing, yes, come forward, give us your name and where you live.
Hello, I'm Scott Burson, 708 Vinarden Road. I am fully in support of this rezoning. We desperately need housing. I know many, many people who would love to live here and have absolutely no way to do so. Great location by downtown, I think this will be a benefit to the town.
Thank you so much. Anyone else like to speak at the public hearing? Seeing no one, public hearing is now closed. What's the wish of council?
Motion to amend the city's 2020 Future Land Use Map for the four parcels on South College Street between West McDowell Street and Heron Street to change their designation from institutional slash governmental to commercial mixed use.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion among council. Any, Chris, anything you'd like to talk about? We do need housing. If I heard correctly, we've got a deficit of 1, 1,500 units, Philip?
The 2017 Downtown Master Plan says within, within a five-minute walk of downtown, we need 1,850 units.
850. Okay, thank you so much. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a second motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve rezoning of four tracks at 510 South College Street, 450 South College Street, and the east side of West McDowell Street, back from South College Street, from medium intensity district to high intensity district.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, our next item of business is another consideration to rezone two tracks of land at 1121 North Green Street from low intensity district to medium intensity district, which is a restricted residential overlay. It's a public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, public hearing, okay. A call, open a public hearing, ask Philip Luckadoo, please, to give us some information about this.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the rezoning, as you stated, was for 1121 North Green Street from low intensity district to medium intensity district. KRP Investments LLC made this application. It's a total of about 6.43 acres. The west of the two parcels, if you look on the map that's on your screen, so west of the two parcels adjacent to North Green Street is a parcel that is, that is owned by the same, the same owner, and that is the access, or would be the access to North Green Street. All of the properties are within the city's ETJ. The Mission 2030 Plan designates these parcels, as well as the Meadowview subdivision that is adjacent, and let me point that out. So the Meadowview subdivision is, is here, and then in the yellow highlight is the subject It designates that, those parcels and the, and that subdivision to be residential low density, while the parcels fronting on North Green Street are immediately adjoining with the city limit, is designated as general, commercial, and retail. The LID, just a brief description of those zoning districts, LID is for single-family and other low-density residential uses. MID, again, as stated in the previous case, is intended for a variety of medium to high-density residential zones and some low-intensity office institutional and some adjacent commercial uses. So the, so the request then is to add a, a restricted residential zone, and that has the effect of restricting those uses to the residential and other ancillary uses, but it allows that density to go from the density that's allowed in LID. And just briefly, LID has a base residential density of two units per acre, but with the incorporation of the performance points, you can go to six units per acre. Again, MID is two units per acre base, 10 units per acre with the performance points. If, if you, you don't get those automatically, again, you, you have to take certain precautions to do that, but, but you can go up to 10. The parcels are, and I'll go to this map, this is the, this just illustrates the future land use and the current zoning. And the utility map, as you see, they are served with current water and sanitary sewer. The issue with the sewer is that there is not presently enough capacity to handle a, a higher-density type development. As you are also aware, and so that the public is aware, that is a project that we have currently in design to increase capacity, to, to make this, this and other developments like it possible, so that we have enough sewer capacity to, to actually make that possible. The rezoning to the medium intensity district with the restricted residential overlay could impact adjoining lands by adding slightly higher density, which could have the effect of increased traffic. We have, I have reached out to NC DOT, they are looking at that request to determine if, if a traffic impact analysis would, would be necessary. I don't know that it kind of checks off all those boxes to require a traffic impact analysis. Regardless, they would be required to obtain a, an encroachment permit from the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and so whatever measures that would be merited by the department would be, have to be installed, whether that be a turn lane, whether it be a deceleration lane, whether it be striping, whatever the case may be, that would have to take place. We're just too early in the process right now for any development, because we don't know what development would be there. We, we're too early in the process to know what that may be, but regardless, they would have to go before the DOT to get that encroachment permit. The 2030 Future Land Use Map indicates, as I stated earlier, residential low density, and so if council should wish to rezone the property, again, according to the state law, we have to make, take necessary actions. And the state law, just for clarification, states that the rezoning has to be consistent with your future land use plan, and so you have to amend that first in order to take the action to rezone the property. That was, but the, that being said, the rezoning request was recommended by staff, and it was heard at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on March 10, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend the amendment to the Future Land Use Plan and to the zoning map by a vote of four to two.
Thank you, Philip. We are in public hearing, so would anybody like to speak for or against rezoning two tracks of land at 1121 North Green Street?
And could I make one statement for the public record? We have received several emails throughout the last few days that have come in, and all of those have been provided to the city council.
Yes, come forward, state your name and where you live.
Mayor, council, my name is David Wells, and my wife and I own a home at 203 Meadowview Street, which would be negatively impacted by the proposed rezoning at 1121 North Green Street. KRP Investments wants to rezone property next to our neighborhood so that they can build a multi-story complex, apartment complex. Along with several other, other neighbors, we attended and spoke at the rezoning meeting on March the 10th. We are very concerned about the noise, congestion, loss of character of our neighborhood, and decrease in our property value. And so were the two planning and zoning members who voted against the rezon. We understand the need for more housing, and more housing could be built on the properties in question as they are currently zoned. The current zone would keep the area and the housing consistent with the 2030 future plan use. Obviously, much thought was put into that plan, and we believe it is consistent with the vision most of us have for Morganton. After all, our motto is nature's playground. There are other properties available already appropriately zoned for larger apartment complexes. And if this rezoning is allowed, where will it stop? Think of Charlotte, think of Gastonia. People are moving away from there to here to get away from that. So we can only keep the value of being nature's playground if we mean it. So please vote against this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak?
My name is Craig Stone from Jamestown, North Carolina, 5614 Riverdale Road. I am with Winfield Properties and KRP Investments, I wish to speak in favor of this particular proposal. You may also be familiar off of Fiddler's Court here in the community, Meadowbrook Apartments is a community that we've had here for more than 10 to 15 years. It's been a quiet part of the community for quite some time. We recently have been under construction in Hickory, also in Valdez, and so we have a number of, of different communities in the area. We are a 50-year-old family company from Jamestown, North Carolina. This is what we specialize in doing, apartments, workforce housing, things of that nature throughout our state. And so Deer Point Apartments, we're proposing 72 units. It is awful difficult these days to find a parcel and to find a tract of land to meet all of the criteria with lifestyle amenities and access to grocery store, things like that, that anybody in the community that would want to live in a, a place like this would have access to. And so that's part of how this particular parcel was selected. I know there was some questions about traffic and those kinds of things, and I think staff indicated that we'll have to go through a process where DOT will review what we're doing. There'll be items they could or could not place as far as restrictions go. I'm not sure that with the trip count that we're talking about with this community, it would trip a traffic impact study, but it could, and that would be something that would move through the process and would be checked and done. In addition to zoning, in addition to post, you know, retention of water, those kind of things, there's all kinds of restrictions that we would move through. We tried to work diligently with staff throughout the process and tried to communicate everything. This amounts to roughly, if it were to go forward today, about a 14, little over $14 million investment in the community. The community and the housing needs are great, and this is a part of that, to invest long-term into the community. I don't know if there's other questions or things that can be answered in a public setting like this, but, you know, if we can, we'd love to answer any questions as they come up.
Counsel, have any questions right now? Thank you so much for presentation. Anyone else? Okay?
My name is Stana Black. This is my husband, John Black. We live at 111 Meadowview Street. Some of our neighbors have already touched on some of our issues, our concerns with the noise, congestion, the aesthetics to our home, the decrease in property value. Traffic is a big issue. The convenience store right there below Mul Lane, they are constant wrecks, constantly. One of our neighbors, we spoke to, they actually did a police report search and found that the accidents between Stanford Drive and Mul Lane average about 30 accidents per year. With the numbers, they're likely to increase with the 60-plus more families to these apartments and double the cars, the accidents are going to greatly increase. We also are concerned about the privacy issue. With a three-story apartment building, you know, approximately 50 feet away from our property line, these tenants are going to be looking directly down in our backyard. Several of our neighbors have swimming pools.
We have a swimming pool.
Um.
There are two more swimming pools on that property line, property line adjoining this parcel.
And there's just no amount of buffer, amount of trees, fencing, you know, that's going to be able to help with the privacy issue. We do believe that, you know, people should be able to do what they want to with their land, but we also believe that what they do with their land should not negatively affect the land that it borders. If you do approve this, we do have some, a lot of questions, and I don't know if this is where we need to ask them, or if the gentleman from KRP can answer these, but if the rezoning is approved, you know, how many feet off our property line is the apartment complex going to be built? How many feet of buffer is there going to be between the apartment complex and our property line? They mentioned in the meeting that they would leave some existing trees. Is all of these trees within the buffer, or is it just the trees over eight inches around? Because we understand that they get points for the bigger the trees. Sorry, lost my place.
If they cut the smaller trees, that's where you are.
Yeah, yeah, you got it. If they cut the smaller trees, that's right. The wind impact on those bigger trees is going to be an issue, you know, and so then we worry about those bigger trees falling into our property on our houses, because they are. We own actually no trees. On our property line, all those trees belong to the other property. And, you know, the other question is, is this low-income housing? You know, with low-income housing, the statistics show that the crime rate's going to go up. We do worry about that, you know? Our quaint little neighborhood has basically, we have no issues, you know? And most of us bought these properties thinking we have this lovely forest in behind us, and, you know, all our neighbors are really close, and now, you know, we're going to have three-story apartments looking down on us. And I just ask each and every one of you, if it was in your backyard, would you want it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor and council, may I, I think at this point be appropriate for me to remind council that what you're considering tonight is a request to rezone, that you should not take into consideration any specific plans that may be made by the current applicant, KRP, that the issue is- KRP, that the issue is, should you rezone to allow for the change in potential uses that would be allowed in MID versus LID?
Thank you.
It's perfectly appropriate, of course, to ask questions like, what kind of buffering is allowed in a particular zone? That's fine, obviously, but you should not consider the specific plans.
Okay. Philip, could you, would you address a buffer, please? Could you?
Or setbacks or anything?
I won't be able to quote them off the top of my head. The, the, I would, generally, setbacks in MID, side setbacks are 10 feet, I believe. You have, I believe that would be, and I'd have to go back and verify this, I believe it would be a type-two buffer, which basically states that it has to be 15 feet, and there has to be a certain density of plants, trees, bushes, that type of thing that are planted in there. Could also be a fence that would be required.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Public hearing is still open.
Hi, I'm Daphne Stevens. I reside at 109 Meadowview Street. There's a couple of concerns for the cemeteries that are adjoining these properties. I don't know if anyone knows, but we, I stated this at the zoning committee. The Advent Christian Church Cemetery is a very old church cemetery, and the graves could probably be spread out beyond the actual cemetery site with no headstones or markers. Over 100 descendants in the community have ancestors there. The second cemetery that is above the property is the Quaker Meadows Historic Foundation Cemetery. And as you know, the graves of a lot of the American Revolution patriots are buried there. It is, it was restored in 1981 and deeded to the Historic Foundation in 1992. It's also on the National Register of Historic Places in 1980, that took place in 1987. And I've spoken with one of the members of the Historic Foundation, and she stated that a, that she thinks that a survey archaeologist would need to be hired to survey these two cemeteries for possible graves that could be located outside of the cemetery areas, so that no grave would be disturbed by a project if it were to happen. A ground-penetrating radar device is one piece of equipment used by the archaeologist, and she says there are evidence of graves not marked, indentations of the ground, and disturbed earth have been noted outside of these cemeteries by a member of the Historic Foundation. That has a very strong interest in preserving these cemeteries. So there is also a concern for vandalism and the possible digging into a grave upon construction of a project if that were to take place. So we don't know how close this, if a project is, comes, we don't know how close that would come, but that's something to take into consideration. I think so. And there was one other thing that I was going to ask. Is this rezoning property in the city or county?
It's in our extraterritorial jurisdiction, so it's outside of the city limits, but by state law, it's subject to our zoning, and that's just a certain area around some of our city limits.
The same as your neighborhood Meadowview?
Right, right. And, you know, I was going to point out, we live right beside John and Tanna, and one thing that I also was wanting to point out is that, is that when Morganton adopted the plan to zone this LID many, many years ago, our neighborhood residents built and purchased their homes knowing that it was LID, and the surrounding land was LID. And nothing's changed the dynamics of the low-density zone, so having single-family homes in that potential area would not affect our home values. But the MID rezoning request would greatly depreciate our home values, and all of us have been up in that development. The homes are 20-plus years, and we have a lot of sentimental values to our neighborhood. So, and it's just like John and Tanna said, all of you sitting here probably live in nice homes. Go look in your back, go look out your back window of your kitchen or your door and stare into a three-story building that has been proposed by KRP from the zoning committee that we met at. So, you know, think about that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have a question.
Okay.
I just have a question, real quick. She said there's a state law that gives a corporation the authority.
You need to please identify yourself.
I'm Joshua Bateman at 118 Dogwood Drive. This is kind of an educational moment. I think we all need to kind of understand here, the city of Morganton is a corporation. It is not a government. What state law gives the city of Morganton, the corporation of Morganton, the jurisdiction to govern over this land? Please, can you provide that for us?
I'm sure we can.
Should be the General Statutes of North Carolina, Chapter 160D. I'll be glad to provide you a copy of the entire, what is it, Philip, 50 pages or whatever?
Corporation that gives a corporation the authority. We would all like to see that.
Bateman, Morganton is a city chartered by the state of North Carolina, like every other municipality in the state. It is a municipal corporation.
Not a government.
It is a government body, subordinate to the state of North Carolina.
Corporation cannot be a sovereign government. It cannot govern any jurisdiction over that. Please provide all of us with that information, please. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm David Miller, and I live 2980 Oak Forest Lane, Morganton. I don't have a home in this Meadowview subdivision. I have two building lots on it, but, so, and they do back up to this property that's proposed to be rezoned. And my plans were to build a house on that property, and I know many of the people that live in there, and they've called that a home for a good, long time, and they've raised their families in there. And many of them are retired now, and that's the place they were going to retire, and I hope you'll take that in consideration when you vote on it, or when you allow a certain incorporation to come in, out of town, and build a multifamily units in there. And when they built those homes, like Daphne said, when 20 years ago, they looked at that. They looked at the zoning, they looked at what was, what was there, and they built their home there. And now, after they've got it paid for, probably a lot of, that it's going to be affected by this, and I just feel like that you need to look at the effects that will come from the, from the building there behind them. I know Mr. Lookaday there, he mentioned 15 feet off the property line, and he mentioned trees and a fence. I don't know how, you know, 15 feet, you can't, a tree, you can't even plant a tree in 15 feet, you know, if it grows up, and a fence as well. You got to have, I know we, you know, we got to talk about buffers and stuff like that, and I know that's not what you're looking at, but you got to look at these people. They have a lot more investment than I do. I just have two vacant lots. They have a home built there, and that's their life, you know. I could, I could walk away from mine and try to sell it or something, but that's their home. And I feel like that you need to take that in consideration over what a big incorporation would do to come in from out of town that has no interest in those people and their, and their investment. They're just looking after their personal investment that they're going to have into the, to the large building. And I know we need housing, and I know there's a lot of housing being built right now in Morganton, but it's being built in areas that can handle that. It's not in residential areas. And they've weathered the storm through Walmart being, market being built there below them, and a lot of other businesses right below them, and, you know, I just want you to consider what it would do to these good people that have been living there for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, public hearing is now closed. What's the wish of counsel?
Make the motion to amend the city's 2030 future land use map for the two tracts totaling about 6.43 acres at 1121 North Green Street from residential low-density to residential medium-density.
I have a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
Discussion.
You know, I just think that I've been in a situation that the folks have been similar to, where you buy a piece of property and you feel that there's not going to be any kind of encroachment that isn't similar to what you have. Came in front of this body of folks and asked them not to rezone it so that something could be built, but it was, at that time, the council felt that the, and it was, it was a multifamily, was important to the community at that, at that time. I've been working with Allen Wood and the group because the need for housing is so great, and what we're doing tonight is not saying that we rubber stamp a project that wants to use this land. We are saying that this is a piece of property that we have that has an opportunity to bring to this town more housing. And what I like about it, it's not a Murphy's Farm housing, perhaps, but hopefully we'll get a project in there that is for workforce housing versus downtown housing, which is really high-end housing. It is so hard for change, especially where it affects your personal property, but I feel like by changing the 2030 future land use plan, we are adapting ourselves to the needs of today and not the needs of 2017. And that's why I would vote in favor of this.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Need another motion, please?
Motion to approve rezoning of two tracts of 4.47 acres and 1.96 acres at 1121 North Green Street from low-intensity district to medium-intensity district, restricted residential overlay.
Okay, I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Wendy, this would be the restricted residential overlay, correct?
Correct.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, our next subject is the consideration of the city of Morganton waterline relocation construction to DOT project. Sally?
Yes. You have before you tonight an agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. They are doing a construction project on Goodman Lake Road. It requires that a bridge be replaced. We have utilities in the area. The agreement states that because we're a Tier 1 county, DOT will pay 75% of the cost of the waterline relocation. We would bear 25%, currently estimated at $22,213.01, and that would hit our water fund in the 2223 budget year.
What's the wish for counsel?
Make a motion to approve an agreement contract with the NC DOT for the waterline relocation on Goodman Lake Road in the amount of $22,213.01.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Sally, any idea when this would take place?
DOT is already working. They sent us the agreement after they started the project.
They started?
So I'd say real soon.
Well underway.
Okay, well, good. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of a contract with Gannett Fleming to complete 100% design for the College Street rightsizing project. Sally?
Yeah, this is one of those projects that we've been talking about and dealing with for years. It is the redo of College Street. It's a $3.3 million project. There's 2.6 in grant funding available that we have secured for, it's $662,000 of city funding. To date, we have 25% designs. DOT has authorized that we are allowed now to contract for 100% designs. Gannett Fleming is who did the 25%. So this contract is for them to do the design work up to $425,703.87. And again, that comes out of the grant funding and the funding we've already set aside.
What's the wish of counsel?
Motion to...
Go ahead, Wendy.
Motion to award contract to Gannett Fleming for College Street rightsizing project in the amount of $425,703.87.
Okay, we have a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Sally, this would get some of the right-of-way acquisition out of the way, is that correct?
They would be able to do that as they go for that, and this would get drawings and us able to go out for construction bids.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of award of a contract to Wildlands Engineering to complete the 2022 grant application for Golden Leaf and EEG for Bethel Park improvements. Sally?
Yes, we are beginning to enter in the grant-seeking portion of our meeting tonight. Many items coming now, we'll be dealing with that. As we had a public meeting earlier this afternoon in this very room to talk about Bethel Park and the opportunities for improving that park, for restoring the streams, for doing everything to mitigate the flooding that happens there on a full-time basis, and then making that a park that our citizens can use. We want to try to garner every dollar that we can and go after every opportunity. So Wildlands Engineering is working with us on Phase 1 of stream restoration, Phase 2, Phase 3, all of those things. They are going to assist us in submitting a grant application to Golden Leaf in the current process, and then also to the EEG grant, which is an Attorney General's grant from eastern North Carolina. The cost for them to do this is $3,150.
What's the wish of counsel?
I'll make the motion to contract with Wildlands Engineering to complete 2022 grant applications with Golden Leaf and EEG for Bethel Park improvements.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Sally, discussion. Sally, the, the contract to do it is $3150. The application fee is $2,300, and another application fee of $850, so some of that money is application fees, correct?
That is, they, so they are charging us $3,150, $2,300 to do the Golden Leaf application, and $850 to do the EEG application.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of approval of several items related to the Bethel Park Phase 1 stream restoration. Sally?
Yes, so this is a continuation. As we discussed earlier, we have been fortunate enough to have applied for a North Carolina Land and Water Fund grant to begin stream restoration at Bethel Park, and we have been awarded a grant up to $500,000. In the 2122 budget, the current budget year, you have $409,107 in city matching funding in, in the budget to match that. In addition, there's about $278,000 worth of in-kind work the city forces would perform in order to meet the grant requirements. We have received our grant agreement. You have seen the draft agreement, so I need you to consider three things tonight if we're moving forward. Number one is approve a resolution accepting the grant for up to $500,000. Number two, approve a budget amendment that would establish a multi-year capital project fund, because this is going to take several years, as we discussed earlier tonight, and establish that project fund in the amount of $1,187,310. And then finally, award a contract for the design services and permitting with the Corps of Engineers and any DEQ permitting that we need. of Engineers and any DEQ permitting that we need, and award that to Wildlands Engineering so that they can start Phase One design. And the amount for that is a contract not to exceed $202,743. It's part of the project budget, part of the grant funding we've been given in our match, which is in our budget today.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to approve a resolution accepting the NCLWCF grant of $500,000 and to authorize the mayor and/or the city manager to execute and issue those agreements on behalf of the city, together with the additional authority to make such alterations, technical amendments, and changes as may be necessary to implement each of the agreements.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need another motion, please?
I've entered a motion to approve a budget amendment to establish the multi-year project budget for Bethel Park Phase One renovations in the amount of $1,187,310.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need another motion, please?
Make a motion to award a contract for design and permitting services to Wildlands Engineering for Phase One in an amount not to exceed $202,743, and to authorize the mayor and/or the city manager to execute and issue those agreements on behalf of the city, together with the additional authority to make such alterations, technical amendments, and changes as may be necessary to implement each of the agreements.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of approval of an application for a Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant for Bethel Park improvements. Sally?
In case it's not obvious, we have a large project to do at Bethel Park, and we are trying to take every step possible to garner every dollar that we can find to go toward that project. Another opportunity, and this is really the follow-up to our 4:30 public meeting where we took public comments about what our community would like to see in the redesign of Bethel Park. So Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, another state fund, allows grant applications up to $500,000. There's a required match for that grant. We have been encouraged to get into this grant cycle, which is May 2 of 2022. We are working on that process, would ask your permission to support that grant application. It's an opportunity because the $500,000 in land and water money that we've already been awarded can work as the match to this. So that's important. The dollars we already have budget also serve as a match to this. That being said, all of those dollars don't complete the project, and it's a multi-year project that's going to require more. But we feel like this is a great opportunity for us to get to do this, and it's also in compliance with our recreation master plan.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to support the grant application to Parks and Recreation Trust Fund requesting $500,000 for the Bethel Park Phase One project and to commit to providing the local matching funds. PARTF's local match requirement may be met with the city's existing $500,000 commitment from NCLWF.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of award of contract to W.D. Dixon and Company to submit applications for the Spring 2020 funding for water and wastewater infrastructure. Sally?
We're going to change subjects, but we're still in grants. And in case you're keeping a tally, we're working on up to tens of millions of dollars that we're talking about trying to seek grant funding for projects. This is another one that we have been advised now is a great time for us to get into the May 2, 2022 cycle for funding. And as if we haven't shared enough acronyms with you tonight, we're going to throw a few more at you. So city staff has been working, and you all know that for several years, we have had water and wastewater large projects. In our capital plan, we have appropriated funding for design, and they have been designed, and we have been searching for opportunities to get monies, whether it's grant money or some other type of money. Those two projects are the Silver Creek Pump Station, and that has been reestimated at current dollars at $5.3 million. And then the coagulation and sedimentation basin rebuild at the water treatment plant, and that has been reestimated in today's dollars at $4.16 million. We have been doing everything we can to try to get money to do that, that we don't have to borrow and we don't have to pay back. We've been advised that because of all the ARPA money and the federal money out there right now sitting at the North Carolina Division, NCDEQDWI, which is the North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality, the Division of Water Infrastructure, I believe is what that means, that if we apply in this cycle, we have an opportunity to be considered for grant monies that we don't have to pay back, funding part of this. They also have a low-interest loan program, which we have used before, and what we have agreed to is if we don't get all of this funded with grants, we would consider going into the low-interest loan program. So again, WK Dixon is an engineering firm that is helping us with this application. They are on our own call engineering list. They have agreed to help with this application in a very short-term turnaround for an amount of $15,000, not to exceed $15,000. That, there's no budget amendment required. We have that in our professional services already. So like last time, I need you to consider three things. I need you to consider approving a contract with WK Dixon and Company up to $15,000 to prepare the grant applications. I need you to do two separate resolutions. One resolution that authorizes us to apply with NCDEQ for the Silver Creek Station at $5.3 million. That includes a 20% contingency because with pricing and everything now, we're a little concerned. And then a resolution authorizing us to apply for the drinking water project, which is upgrading the coagulation and sedimentation basins at the treatment plant, that $4.16 million. And again, that includes a 20% pricing contingency.
What's the wish of council?
I'll make a motion to approve a contract with WK Dixon and Company Incorporated for up to $15,000 to prepare the applications for submittal to DWI by May 2, 2022.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need another motion, please?
Motion to approve a resolution authorizing the application to NCDEQDWI Spring 2022 for the construction of the wastewater project to improve the Silver Creek Pump Station.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Sally, this would help with that, any sewer issues on Highway 181, is that be correct?
No, this is not, this is not that project. That's a different project, and that's with two other sources of grant funding.
I withdraw my question.
This is the, this is the pump station at the soccer complex. This is the workhorse in the system.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need another motion, please?
Motion to approve a resolution authorizing the application to NCDEQ-DWI Spring 2022 for the construction of a drinking water project to upgrade and rebuild the water treatment plant, coagulation, and sedimentation basins.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Sally, I noticed flocculation was left out. We're not doing anything with flocculation.
We just got tired of saying all three words.
All three of them.
That's just all I've got for you for that one.
Sedimentation and coagulations, yes. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of award of a contract for Shuey Park restroom facility project. Sally?
Yes, several years ago, the restroom facilities at Shuey Park were damaged in an automobile accident. Since that time, of course, that's been filed with our insurance carrier. They have looked at the project. We have estimated the project. We have gotten bids on the project several times. We finally ended up with around $75,000, a little over $75,000 in insurance reimbursement for that. We also received a $50,000 private donation from a family that you have accepted in previous months to go with this, to help rebuild those facilities. DND took informal bids on March the 29th. Six bids were submitted. The lowest responsive responsible bid was submitted to us by CSC Construction in Morganton, and that amount is $133,697. You have the bid tabs in your booklet. It's basically 1,329 square feet, plus or minus, and would recommend that you consider awarding this to CSC Construction.
What's the wish of council?
I've entered a motion to award the contract to, for CSC Construction of Morganton, North Carolina, in the amount of $133,697 to perform the Shuey Park restroom facility project.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have consideration of approval of a preliminary plat West Union Terrace located along Lyman Court. Call on Philip Luckadoo to give us some information about this plat.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is, again, for a West Union Terrace. It is a proposed seven-lot subdivision that is located along Lyman Court and West Union Street. The applicant, and one thing I will say that's not on the agenda summary, is that this is a project that sought out and is incorporating performance points from our zoning ordinance into the project, which is the reason why they are able to gain seven units as opposed to maybe two. So the applicant is requesting right-of-way to be, that is required to be reduced from the required 40 feet to 30 and a half feet at the front at the intersection of West Union, and then increasing to 38 feet toward the end of the street. If you're familiar with Lyman Court, it is an existing street that's about 14 or 15 feet wide, and so, and it is an infill development. And so the, when you subdivide on an existing street and it's substandard, then you are required to increase it to the required width. So this request is for a reduction in the right-of-way. Similarly, they are requesting for a reduction in pavement width from 24 feet to 21 feet, and then they would have a two-foot grass strip between the back of the curb and the sidewalk. These requests were recommended by staff to the Planning and Zoning Commission as they are in compliance with the North Carolina DOT Complete Streets Manual. In fact, those, Albert Tron Boulevard that we designed has 11-foot lane widths, and College Street, if it holds at its 25% designs, will be, I think those lane widths are 10 and a half, 10 or 10 and a half feet wide. But because of the speed and because of the short length of the road, we are fine with that, and as was the Planning and Zoning Commission. They have also requested to pay, be able to pay rather the fee in lieu of the open space dedication or parkland dedication requirement in subdivision ordinance. That was a, if you go through the equation that required them to dedicate .14 acres, and then put the calculation in here that, if you take that taxable value times the .14, that comes out to an amount of $27,457.64. Their request gives them the ability to pay that fee in lieu. They don't necessarily have to if they found a way to dedicate that land. Could do that also. Planning and Zoning Commission, at their March 10 meeting this year, voted 6-0 to approve the preliminary plat and to allow the developer to pay the fee in lieu. And they also approved subsequently a statement of consistency with the Mission 2030 land use plan.
What's the wish of council?
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for West Union Terrace as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Philip. Okay, next is consideration, there's only one motion, right? Consideration of appointment to the Morganton Historic Preservation. We've had a person apply, Ruth Roseborough, term to expire November the 8th. What's the wish of council?
Motion to appoint Ruth Roseborough for remainder of the three-year term.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'd like to give a 30-day notice for vacancies. The Human Relations Commission expiring terms Alice Horton at BUCM, Tricia Evans-Hunt, Patricia Irwin, and due to the death of Gail Jones, there is a vacancy. If you're wishing to volunteer for any of these vacancies, please come see us at City Hall and on the website, request for appointment to the City of Morganton Boards and Commissions. Anything else to come before the council tonight?
Yes, I want to tell you that with Renee coming, I am just letting you all know that I have designated her after tonight as the city clerk, and just letting you know that. And I would be really remiss if I didn't say that we're really happy to have her.
Yes.
And thank her. This has been quite a meeting for her first meeting. So we've done a lot of business tonight, millions of dollars worth of business tonight. And finally, I would really like to say, go heels.
Okay, okay. I think we have one other, we have a gentleman who would like to address council.
Yes, I'm William Andrews. I'm owner of those properties that you just approved, the plat. One of the things that was included in there was the $27,000 impact fee. I'm objecting to that because on the east side, we are putting in a park-like situation. It's 200 feet by 70 feet wide, that will have all sorts of amenities. In fact, I guess your zoning department or somebody came up with ideas for park-like settings, and whether they're ball fields or they're passive parks or what have you. And we're doing that for our residents. So to have to pay for a full amount for other people in the building, we're taking care of the people on that street. So, I mean, you went so fast, I didn't get a chance to come up here and, you know, before you made that motion to...
Mr. Andrews, I believe as Philip said, that's the, that would be the fee in lieu if that's what you choose. You can still dedicate the, what is it, Philip, 14 one-hundredths of an acre of park or recreation space. You don't have to, if you choose to do that, you have the property, you can do as you wish, as long as you can get that much.
Okay, we can't take it, we can't put a whole, we'd have to have some room for the buildings, okay? But we do, what I'm saying is that we have 200 feet by 70 feet. That's going to be our private community park.
Okay.
So it doesn't meet the exact thing, but it sure as heck takes a burden off of the, you know, the city to participate.
I'm just saying that, I mean, I don't know anything about the plan. I don't think that's been presented, has it?
It hasn't because that area is going to be on the east side of the street.
Okay.
So we're doing, we're doing Plan A is to get the west side started and finish that, and of course, participate in the improvements to Lyman Court. And then we would go over, while we're doing that, the plans are now being drawn to submit for the east side units.
Okay, I understand that, but I'm just saying, you know, if you choose to actually provide the physical land for the recreation or park space, that's fine. You don't have to, and what the council's action was, was you can pay the fee in lieu if that's what you choose. And that, Philip, is that essentially?
If I understand what Mr. Andrews is saying, in fact, to provide a point of clarification, I think what he is saying is, in the subdivision ordinance, the required dedication and open space has to be public.
Yes.
So you either do that or you pay the fee in lieu.
Correct.
If approved by council. I think what he's saying, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what he's saying is that he would like to count the 200 by 70.
200 by 70.
200 by 70 as park space, but still keep it private, and that satisfy that requirement.
It's the same question we had on mall hauling a couple of months ago.
Which is, which is why a developer would choose to pay the payment in lieu instead.
And it would be proportionate. I mean, I'm not...
But, but it would be private. That's the problem with it. Our park space has to be private.
If I could explain what I'm thinking of, and then you can come back at me, okay? I'm saying this, we're providing enough parking, park space, and dedicated for all the president, all the homeowners that are on, that are part of this project on both sides of the street. Now, the ratio that he's talking about was, I don't know what, I forget what was it?
.14.
.14 acres.
Okay. So what I'm saying is, you could theoretically say, okay, we can take care of that amount of, by a proportion, instead of paying $27,000. By the way, this is only going to go as a cost on people that are going to use that park, as opposed to, okay? So the appropriate thing in my mind would be, do a percentage of, if it's 1.4, and our, I forget what, 14,000 square feet or what have you, do a percentage and reduce that amount because of servicing the people on that street.
Okay, Mr. Andrews, your complaint is duly noted, and I ask you to work out with legal and planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning, yeah.
We are adjourned.
I think that's correct. Sorry.